Next roll call please. Sorry.
Ms. Bayless, here. Mr. Becker?
Here.
Ms. Crutchfield?
Here.
Ms. Hale?
Here.
Ms. Holland?
Here.
Ms. Reyes?
Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, well then we will move on to our recognition.
Good evening. This evening, we are honored to recognize one of our finest with the District 76 Diamond Award. Tonight's nomination actually came in from a substitute, and I know as we move to our Diamond Awards, not just being staff-to-staff recognition, but actually allowing those outside the community to recognize, whether it's parents, students. So tonight's came from a substitute teacher, and what she had to say was pretty impressive. She said Marina constantly has a smile on her face, is nothing but professional, welcoming, and very helpful. Not only do I witness her great rapport with students and staff, she has been extremely helpful and kind to me as a new substitute teacher. Not to mention, she is very well organized. A school would not survive without their administrative support, and this is 100% true about Marina. Marina, it's always special when someone from the outside of our daily environment actually sees exactly what we do every single day here. The subsaw will we witness day in and day out. Your incredible work ethic, your professionalism, and most of all, your consistently positive attitude. And always great lunch suggestions, I'm just saying. She's always got a good tip for a great place to go for lunch. People are drawn to Diamond Lake District 76 because of colleagues like you. You make this a place where others want to work, learn, and grow. Recognizing you with the Diamond Award today is not only fitting, it's truly well-deserved. So thank you for everything you do to make District 76 sparkle and shine. Come on up, we invite you to get your Diamond Award. I think just about every... I think just about everybody in the community knows Marina too. Our next award is for, the first time we are doing this award, the Board of Education implemented a new award for above and beyond. And this is for students who go above and beyond what happens day in and day out in the school. So it might be things that they do beyond the school day, and it might just be how they carry themselves well beyond just the work that happens in the classroom. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Peterson, who's going to recognize one of our middle school students.
I didn't realize I was like the inaugural Above and Beyond Award giver here, so that's awesome. Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to celebrate Jack Lories this evening to be, as he truly, as he is a truly exceptional student and person that goes above and beyond here at West Oak Middle School. Jack was nominated by numerous, numerous D-76 parents for his instrumental role in making our recent back-to-school bash such a tremendous success. He was, he was there to help set up. He was there, he worked the entire event, and he also assisted our parent-teacher organization with cleaning up afterwards. Just a phenomenal person here. These parents, these parents saw firsthand what we see at West Oak. We see, they saw what we see at West Oak every day. A student whose dedication and positive energy shine brightly. We are incredibly proud of Jack, who is not only a great student, but an even better person embodying the values we cherish as our district. Jack's leadership qualities and commitment to service are evident in his involvement in student ambassadors for the last two years. He's a natural leader, always willing to step up and help his peers and the school staff. Jack's genuine kind heart and warm magnetic presence are unmistakable, and his, and his smile is a perfect reflection of someone who seems to never have a bad day. Thank you, Jack, for all you do for our school here at West Oak Middle School and our district here at D-76. Congratulations. I was told he was supposed to sing here, according to Mr. Becker today, so.
Um, I don't have much to say, but thank you to all of you.
Well, fantastic. Congratulations, Jack. Congratulations, Marina. Thank you so much for all that you contribute to our district. And now, we will turn it over to the superintendent report. Um, if you would like to say, you are more than welcome, but you will, you will not hurt our feelings if you sneak out. I think Mr. Hanson might want to take pictures if he didn't already do that. If we dive in?
Yeah, excellent.
Great, okay.
We'll go ahead and give an update this evening. We're excited to update the Board of Education on one of the district's really significant focuses this year related to the 2025 student attendance. So, as shared with the Board of Education in the fall, we've had three really significant goals at a district level, at each of the school levels, at the team level, and at the classroom level down to the impact we know that this has on students. So those three goals were PLCs, professional learning communities, PBIS, related to behaviors and social-emotional supports for students, and the third P is presence. And that's really been focused on making sure that our students are present and here and available for learning each and every day. I'm happy to share the action steps that we put into place in the fall related to the district goal for attendance or presence is that we would implement and maintain consistent school-wide attendance procedures to improve accuracy, accountability, and early intervention for attendance concerns. Our goal was, let's not wait till the end of the year to be like, oh no, we've missed X number of days, and to be really proactive early on so we can get students here as often as possible, and to make that personal connection. So that, that action step was the district-wide action step. Schools made specific action steps at a school level that aligned to that, that really put a personal touch, I think, that you would see in each of their action steps related to how to connect with families in situations where attendance does come up. The other action step district-wide is to increase staff and student and family awareness of the impact the attendance has on student learning, achievement, and school success. So these two action steps, along with the work that has taken place with all of our staff in each of our three buildings, the cabinet team, the entire leadership team, the building principals. I'm happy to, to share an update on the first 30-ish days, 32 days of school. Our Diamond Lake attendance at this point is 87%. Happy to say that with pre-K taken out of the mix, we're at 96% at Diamond Lake. Pre-K is a little tricky because they are only here for half the day, so I think some of that attendance is contributing factor just related to that. But 87% is still really significant, and we continue to work at Diamond Lake to make sure families know even two and a half hours of the day may not seem like much to miss, but it adds up when there's more than, than a couple of days. Over at West Oak Intermediate, I'm really happy to say that there is 95% attendance so far this year, and over at the middle school, 95%. I will be honest, it's like 94.8%, and they made us round up. So you, you can definitely tell there's a healthy competition even going across schools about the presence is so significant, hot significant, how do we make sure that every day counts? And that we're there. But this is for the first 32 days of school attendance. We're going to continue to monitor it, but I'm, I'm happy to say that I do feel like the action steps that our schools have created, the action steps that the leadership team has created and that the schools have created, really are mirroring what we're seeing in students coming to school. You also see students getting PBIS reward tickets for coming to school, and then grade levels are celebrating when there's an announcement on the, the overhead intercom system saying, hey, all of our sixth graders are here today. I mean, you hear the, the collective cheer in the building, and students excited to be present in school is a really great feeling. So did want to provide the board the update related to that, and just knowing that that continues to be an area of focus. We're celebrating the first 32 days. We know that every day after this still counts and is really significant, but just to the kudos and credit of the work that our staff is doing, making the personal phone calls to families, that personal connection that they know is really significant and important is paying off. So we'll continue to work on PLCs, PBIS, and presence, again at the district level, at the school level, down at the team grade levels, and then the individual classrooms, and we know that has a direct impact on our students. So that is all I have for an update for the attendance report for the board. Yeah.
What were the numbers last year?
That's a great question. I don't have them off the top of my head, but I know Robin and I were just talking about this. We were just talking about this. We were not as high, I do know that, but I don't have the exact percentage.
I think we could go back and then look at the, to compare percent to percent. At the end of the year, I pulled data in terms of how many students, and it was close to 50% of the students missed more than 10 days of school last year, which is significant. So, but I didn't pull it like this. So I, we definitely can look into both reports to see if we can see. We were at those.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And then my other question. You just said that Diamond Lake School without the pre-K is 96%. What is recorded with the state of Illinois for attendance to meet the pre-K?
With the pre-K is recorded, but I don't know that their half-day counts as a full day of attendance. Robin, correct me.
I think that their attendance actually goes to like, I think it's reported into that. I can look into that. I don't think it is. We don't have to have that program. I don't think it's reported. I think I know for sure.
There is an attendance piece related to the grant.
Yes.
So I do know we do report it or have to report it to the state for the sake of the grant. Whether it actually physically makes it on our school report card, we can look into. It, it would sound great to say 96%. I, I think DLS would be really happy to be able to say that, but it does show we do have work to do, that even the half-day program, there is significance. Those half-days, especially for the students who are identified to be in our pre-K program, it's critical that they are here every day. That's part of why the attendance is included for the grant and is a critical part of the grant funding too. So, yeah. But we'll pull the existing to share that too. Thank you. The second item we have for the update is, in your folders this evening, I did include a proposed district calendar for the upcoming school year. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things for the board tonight. This is not up for approval or review. It's nice and small font for, for all eyes to see. We got it on, we got it on one page. How about that?
Thank you so much.
Yes. This year is really a, a unique year, and I know that out in the community, there could be families sharing or discussing even with board members related to the construction project at Mundaline High School and the impact that that's going to have on the start dates over the next two years. For the next two years, they will be starting after Labor Day. Typically, with our feet, students feeding into both Mundaline High School and Stevenson High School, a, a consideration we typically try to make is to mirror the schedules as closely as possible. This year, obviously, there is significant discrepancies. So we do have to prioritize, one thing that we have to prioritize as we create our calendar is that our high school-bound eighth-grade students are fully able to participate in summer school programming. So as you look at this calendar, that's a critical piece that I, I want you to be aware we are taking into consideration that all of our students are available, whether they go into Mundaline High School or go into Stevenson, that our eighth graders are prepared and ready in time to be available to attend the summer school programming. This year in particular, we want to be mindful, mindful and solution-focused with our calendar that it takes into account that our families do rely on the older siblings, and we know the discrepancy this year in particular is a critical part. We have been working with the Park District to see what offerings we could align. We have a meeting tomorrow with our grants, our FSCSA grant, to be able to see if we could potentially continue to have funding through the summer. We know that was a substantial piece last summer. We're hoping that funding does continue. They keep telling us, maybe next week we'll know for sure. Maybe next week we, we will know for sure, but as of now, December is when that funding would end. We're hoping the grant does get extended, but we're working with the community partners to try to be solution-focused, because we do know there could be an opportunity where families need that additional support. The proposed calendar that you have in front of you tonight was shared at the Superintendent Advisory Council Team last week, which is individuals, three individuals from each of our schools. They come to the meeting, they're able to take a look at this. They were really empowered with going back to their building teams to share this and gather the staff feedback by October 17. We'd like to collect their feedback and bring a final proposed calendar along with considerations for our families to the November Board of Education for you to review. We want you to have the initial draft in front of you, and then potentially approve then the final calendar in December. We think it's critical for our families in terms of planning to be able to have as much time as possible to have that. So in front of you, what you do see is a typical start date, similar to a start date that we have this year. You'll see in the proposed calendar that went forward to our staff, three teacher institutes versus two with the idea that we would focus potentially on a district day, a school-level day, and then an individual teacher day for institute day to start out the year. You'll notice a couple other changes, including we are looking to potentially run a half-day on the day of homecoming from Mundaline High School. What we did notice is a lot of families, because they do the parade at 3 o'clock, pulled students out early, and we had some attendance issues related to that. We also want our students to potentially fully participate in the homecoming parade if they'd like to, and a lot of our students do with different groups and organizations. So we are looking to potentially include that. I am happy to record Halloween is on a Saturday, so that is a beautiful thing. So for the next two years, we will enjoy the Halloween on a weekend. So we have Halloween on a Saturday, so you'll notice we do not have the half-day on that, on the calendar in October. Some additional things to highlight that are on the proposed calendar is we did align our spring break to 1/20/75 and over to Stevenson High School, so that all of our spring breaks then would be in alignment. So I think that that's critical with our families in terms of planning for vacations. And then the last day of school that we are proposing with the current schedule that's you see, or calendar you see in front of you, would be the Friday before Memorial Day. I don't know that our attendance is necessarily ideal when we go a day or two after that. I think families tend to view those as less critical days. So this mirrors similar in a lot of ways to our current calendar, but just wanted to highlight those changes. Again, we'll gather staff feedback by October 17, bring those feedback that the staff provided as well as potential solutions to that gap. Right now, if we end on the 28th, the gap between our end of our school year and the end of the Mundaline High School school year will be approximately eight days. So that would be the difference. So just wanted the board to be aware of that at this point, and then we'll gather the feedback from staff and bring that forward for November review and December approval.
So when does Mundaline get out?
Mundaline doesn't get out until...
Is it eight, like eight weekdays or eight holidays?
They get out, I believe it was June 9th, if I'm not mistaken. It's, it's eight school days, yes. So the weekends aren't included in there. 9th or 10th, yes, thank you. Yeah, because we have Memorial Day in there. You are right.
Anyone have any questions? Um, I just want to come and say, like, I appreciate that we're looking at the interests of both of the high schools. I think it's awesome to give the kids a half-day for homecoming. It's really nice to allow kids to participate in that, especially since it is such a big kind of community event at this point, and they've kind of expanded. As they were talking about, as Cory was talking about today, they've changed the route, so it goes through neighborhoods and stuff, and it's nice to allow families to be a part of that. And I also appreciate that consideration is taken for the eighth graders that want to attend summer school at Stevens and High School, because that is, you know, about 20% of that class, and due to their attendance rules, they really can't miss any of those days. And it's, it was a sad year, the time that we had to change our calendar because of our own construction when all of those eighth graders had to miss all of the fun kind of end-of-the-year activities. So it means it's always nice to be able to celebrate them and recognize their accomplishments, so.
Just to piggyback on that, even this year's calendar, if your student graduated on Thursday, they started summer school following Monday.
Yeah.
Monday or Tuesday, don't quote me on that, but it's, there's no turnaround time. There's, because high schools generally are off the week before, so that staff has had an opportunity to prep and be ready. So that, that is much appreciated, because those kids, a lot of those classes will impact scheduling for the following year.
Okay. Thank you. We will move on to the business agenda. We have one item up for action, um, which is the omnibus vote agenda. My papers are sticking together. And items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, or administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. And please note, this is, and I probably should have said this before I started reading the motion, but this is a little bit unique because of the timing of this month. We want to make sure that the district can pay its bills on time, so we are going to be authorizing pre-approval not to exceed a certain amount. And so be resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through D is listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Ms. Bayless? Ms. Holland?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Crutchfield?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion is approved. And the next item on the business agenda is just for review, and that is reviewing the latest press issue, which is Press 119 for policy updates. As usual, today's our meeting kind of to review. If people have questions or would like to discuss, we can definitely do that. And we will vote on this at our next meeting, which isn't until November. So if anyone would like to discuss, we can do that. If you feel like when we get to November that you would like more discussion, we can do that as well. Did anyone have anything they wanted to discuss or anything that concerned them? It was relatively short this time. Mainly the five-year review, so. Okay. Um, then if nobody has any questions, we will move on to board discussion. And for board discussion this evening, I know that there's been kind of a flurry of meetings, and so I figured this would be a good time for those board members that attended the various meetings just kind of give an update. So do we want to start with the Mundaline Feeder Schools meeting? I believe Tina and Nikki and Erin, you attended that? I don't know if anyone wants to give a specific update or...
So one of the big things that was discussed is Mundaline's new ordinances for impact fees. They tried to align them with some of the neighboring villages, but something got kind of skewed along the way. So Fremont is experiencing, like, I think they're getting like less than 30% or somewhere around 30% of what they had been previously getting for new development. So if you're not familiar with impact fees, like, that's what a developer would pay to the school just to cover potential like future construction costs for the students, the new students that would be added. But, yeah, so they are planning, I'm putting together a letter to send to the village just stating that we would like them to review that and... Yeah. Yeah.
I think one of the things that did come out of it is they were looking, Fremont was looking to see if all of the feeder or school district Board of Educations would be willing to be included on the letter to say maintaining the impact fees as they currently do exist and not to reduce the impact fees, because the reduced impact fee would essentially impact all of the tax-paying body, as those are fees that also go to the libraries, the park districts. So our tax base, while it wouldn't necessarily impact us with additional students, the Ivanhoe subdivision wouldn't necessarily impact us with the new students and additional facilities that we would need, Fremont does need, it does impact our tax base related to that. So they were looking for potentially maybe just a straw poll from the, the board if they would be in support of the letter. Myself, Tricia Casanda, the Fremont Superintendent, and Pete Hannigan, along with Cory Tafoya from the High School District, would be the, the individuals that would help to create the letter if the board would want us to be a part of it.
I think that looks like a yes.
Excellent. I'll, I'll submit the letter to all of you to see and view previous to anything being submitted, but excellent. We meet next week as a feeder superintendent group, so we should have something by the end of that meeting.
I don't think Fremont.
Fremont fields into Stevenson too.
I think they're sticking kind of with their original calendar. But I know, yeah, 75 is, is completely switching to follow.
And Hawthorne is sticking with their current calendar. Yeah. I think that was the largest part of the conversation from that meeting. Did I miss anything?
Eric, that's a little concerning. Okay, um, then from the, there was the Mundaline Area Joint Officials Meeting this morning. Um, I'm trying to see. The mayor shared that they have an Ivanhoe website that's updated. They're going to have a drone show on October 24th. There should be information about that and the, and it's, there's going to be food trucks, and it sounds like kind of a fun family event. They basically were talking about the, the Walnut Ridge annexation and the FNC development moving forward. That was kind of their update. The Lake County Education Foundation was there, and they talked about the Deli Parton Imagination Library Foundation, and so they gave everyone a bookmark where you can scan it and get those free books. So that's fantastic for students. It's like up to five years old. But anyway, that, it's fantastic program, and, and they're really working to try to get, you know, any child that would like a book to have a book, to make sure everyone has books in their house, which was fantastic. Um, Erin talked about, and I mean, I'm going to preview something that she'll probably talk about in more depth later, but just was asking for assistance with the potential IDOT program, or construction that's going to basically go right in front of our schools by the railroad tracks, and obviously would have a significant impact on getting kids to us on campus, but also for any kind of safety... um and obviously would have a significant impact on getting kids to us on campus, but also for any kind of um safety services, whether that's the sheriff or fire um being able to access the campus. Um really looks like that could be a potential nightmare for quite a few years. So. Um it looks like we uh, I guess the mayor said that they had just gotten something and she was going to send that to Erin, and then Senator Hills was also going to connect us with someone from I dot. So that was great. And then um uh and then we talked about transportation costs as well, because I think as you all know that um with uh kind of the increase in the McKinney Vento students and busing them to different areas, our transportation costs have dramatically risen in the last uh year or so. Um so that's something that obviously we're concerned about. Um I'm trying to think, there wasn't a lot uh more going on, I don't think. Um Fremont did discuss the the uh impact fees. Um and so obviously, that's an ongoing issue for them. Um I don't know if there's anything else.
I don't think there's, there was. It it's a great opportunity, though, this collaborative opportunity to put all of us in that same room. A big shout out to the sheriff, the Lake County Sheriff.
Oh.
Sarah, she's done an absolutely remarkable job. She's been keeping us updated as a district and then in the the meeting related to reunification opportunities for us to sit through trainings. I know um there's been some trainings that both Robin and Eric Rogers have gone to, and there's one the three of us are going to be going to in December coming up. So she's been, these opportunities to come together are a great opportunity because it does make a connection, and then she thinks of us when other things come up too. So she's also looking at the I dot opportunities that it would have in terms of lack of access potentially to our campus for um in the event something ever would happen. So she's on it and doing some investigation from us. And as soon as I get anything from the mayor, I will forward it along, so we're all looped in. But yeah. It'll happen sometimes, right now between twenty twenty five and twenty thirty.
Right.
A little window.
Yeah.
A little window, so.
Okay, so that's kind of that update. And then I know that Emily and Erin attended the Verdun Hills Joint Officials Meeting. So I don't know if you guys want to give an update on that. I don't think there's like an ordinance here yet. We did discuss that this morning too, because um basically it seems like every town is slightly different and you, not everything can be enforced. So they were talking about potentially looking at legislation at the state level because basically um the Mundaline Police Chief, I think, said this well, like the technology has outpaced the law on this, and so nobody really anticipated um kind of, I think, the popularity and then also the speed of these, the bikes. Yeah.
What their regulations are, but more how it is really called.
Yeah.
Uh and then the other thing that each that uh of course our local police funds not, you know, they they don't compete with ICE worker, but they don't uh that they'll take four of them.
No, the only thing that the police chief added is um families are free to call nine one one potentially because of they think the police are working in conjunction with ICE. And in turn, when things are happening, they may not be getting the support that they need and really emphasizing to our families, if there is an emergency, you can still call nine one one. There's no connection um at a federal and state and a local level related to that. And that if families do need support, they should be calling nine one one in an emergency, and they will get the the local support that they do need. So um but they're finding that families aren't calling nine one one in fear that there's a connection. So just emphasizing that. Again, this was our first Vernon Hills, and I just want to emphasize it's been a great part. It it was a great partnership and a great opportunity for us to make connections. There are parks that directly impact our families that were discussed. Um a lot of things that absolutely impact D seventy six families, and it was great to be able to have a seat to be a collaborative partner in that room for the first time, which is great.
That's great. Thank you for doing that.
Excellent. That's great.
Okay, um I think that concludes board discussion unless anybody has anything else. Um we do not have any FOIA requests. Notices and communications, we do not have any. Um do we have any public comments or petitions on non agenda items? Okay, and moving on to others, I did get the um, did just I get this? Okay, so I did get the um the resolutions report from the um from I A S B. I we will, I will get you guys a link to this because they have it online. Um and we can review it at the next meeting, and we will probably need to vote on it at the next meeting too. Um Tina volunteered to be our delegate, and so hire and register her for that today. And then, like I said, we'll get you guys um all linked to those resolutions. Normally, they email them to us too, but I don't. Did anyone get an email, any of that? Okay, so since you didn't get an email with that, um I'll make sure that we get you a a copy of that, and then um we'll go through and kind of discuss them and vote on them. I just got this tonight, so I haven't like previewed anything to tell you if there's anything controversial or interesting or anything that would impact us directly. Oh, you do have it. Okay, good. Okay. Oh, it's in your packet. Okay, all right.
No, it's because she's.
Oh, because you're the delegate. Never mind. Okay, I don't remember. Okay, if you got it in the email, then that's perfect. I don't remember seeing it, but I also.
Yeah. For eight.
So a while ago. Okay, if you don't have it, send me a note. Um it's on their website too. And we can go from there. On the eighth? I don't, actually. That's funny. Um, okay, uh that is my update on that. Also, I was going to say that I don't know if everyone got the email from the Stevenson High School feeder. Did you all get that? Tina didn't get that. Elizabeth, did you get that? There's two events. Yeah, so I will, um I don't know if they got the the new board members. I know Erin didn't get it initially. Yeah, you did get that. Okay, so they um, so there, on there is two events that they're planning. The dinner is open to the entire board, and they basically, the setup for that is they will mix our board up with the boards of the other seven schools that feed into, or six, I guess, because it's seven total, that feed into Stevenson. So there will be um administrators there, there will be board members there from all the different boards, and then there's going to be discussion on AI. Um with that, we all can attend. There's no OMA issues with that. Um and I know uh some of us attended that last year. Okay. Bream, yeah. She's like the uh one twenty five secretary. Yeah. Um and then the uh the following meeting is the one that we can only send to people to because it it will um for the legislative meeting uh because it will have OMA impact. So um but that's not until next year at this point. Um so if you, I don't remember if in her email, there's R C P instructions for the dinner, if it's just to get on the calendar, but I think they generally follow up and there's like a Google form you could fill out to R C P. Um but it's a very interesting event because you'll get to meet people from all the different school boards, and um obviously seventy nine is usually there too, so. In this, you know, overlap. Yeah. No, we can all attend because it's not, there's no uh board business is being discussed. Yeah, it was a very nice event. So if it works for your calendar, it's great. Um, yeah, so that's, I just wanted to get that on everyone's radar. Does anyone have anything else for others? Okay, then we will adjourn to executive session for the appointments, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodge against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, please? Yes. Hey, thanks, everybody. It's nice to see all of you.